Good evening. I have seven o'clock and call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Looks like Mr. Justin Smith is absent. And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Pastor and Bel Air citizen Mark Poson here to lead us in prayer.
All right, thank you. Father, thank you so much for just, as I drove in tonight, looking towards the western horizon and the beauty of the sunset. Father, just a wonderful Kansas sunset. Father, that you paint us a new portrait each and every day. Father, we're thankful for, we're on this threshold of spring. Father, the newness that comes with spring. And as we come out of these winter months, the newness that we, the freshness that we feel. And Father, we thank you that you are the author of life. And Father, we just thank you for the mayor, for the city council members, city manager and staff. Father, for their service to the city and dedication to providing for the citizens here in Bel Air. Father, we just pray that you would just bless them with your wisdom as they make decisions, have discussions. Father, just bless them just with your wisdom and discernment. And Father, thank you for all that you do. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have two proclamations to read, and I'll ask Councilmember Greg David to read the first one.
Proclamation, American Red Cross Month, March 2024. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes. Those who volunteer, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas we would like to remember those who help all of us here in Bel Air by giving their time to help their neighbor and thank our heroes, our volunteers, class takers, and financial supporters who help us assist those in need. And whereas in the city of Bel Air, the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and thousands of volunteers to help when disaster strikes. When someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year and provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians. Collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills every year. And whereas our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. The American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Now therefore, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Bel Air.
Thank you. The other proclamation is for severe weather preparedness week of 2024. So to the citizens of Bel Air, greetings. Whereas the severe weather preparedness week is March 4th through 8, 2024, this week. And whereas severe thunderstorms can bring damaging winds, lightning, flash floods, and tornadoes and floods frequently in the spring and summer Kansas landscape. And have often placed lives and property in jeopardy. And whereas by taking reasonable precautions, Bel Air residents can reduce the loss of life and property. And also decrease the effects of severe weather on our local resources and economy. And whereas the Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather and to educate themselves on safety strategies. Therefore, in official recognition of this statewide event, I, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim March 4th through 8, 2024. Severe weather preparedness week in Bel Air. Move on to determining agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions to be considered? Hearing none, I'll go on to the consent agenda. So it contains the minutes of the February 2024 city council meeting as well as two resolutions changing signatories. For the City of Bel Air accounts. Are there any additions or corrections? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
A motion to approve the consent agenda that is listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David and second by Mr. Welch. If any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Discussion on approval of appropriations ordinance. So this appropriation ordinance includes $195,000 for CCUA debt. And operation and maintenance, additional $15,000 to KDH for loan payment, legal fees of $10,000, and miscellaneous monthly expenses. Any questions concerning the appropriation ordinance? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 24-04.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean and second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries four to zero. City requested appearances. We have done, so we'll move on to citizen concerns. I have a request by Mr. Gary Jans to speak to the councils. We'll give you three minutes. Please state your name and address with the record.
Gary Jans, 6200 East 45th Street North. The 2024 March issue of the Bel Air Breeze reports that Bel Air City Council chooses roundabout. A website and a survey generated 109 responses when, actually, according to the survey report on 21424, there were 192 responses. Question seven of the survey asked the question, which intersection control type would you prefer at 45th and Oliver? 192 responded with 119 preferred the signalized intersection, which is 62%. And 73 preferred the roundabout, which is 38%. The question would indicate most concerned citizens would believe the signalized intersection would prevail and be chosen. However, as I watched the council meeting from home, I heard all the pros and cons of both intersections from Ken Lee and comments from the council. As the council voting commenced, I heard comments stating, well, we can't make everyone happy, so I'll vote for the roundabout. Which the council did with a four to one vote. This raises a question, why did we have a survey at all when it leaves 62% of the citizens unhappy? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other, I have no other requests for citizen concerns, but I do know there are other citizens that are in the audience. So if anyone else is wanting to speak, please say so, and we'll let you speak. Otherwise, we'll move on. Hearing none, we'll go on to council member reports. So Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. On February 22nd, I attended the CCUA meeting, just in the audience as an observer. And I'll let the board members report on that. And then Saturday, I attended Sunrise's production of Seven Brides for Seven Brothers. And I've said it before, there is so much talent there, and I look forward to the day that they can hold those performances here in, here in Bel Air on their campus with some of their expansion plans that we've heard about. And then I'm just going to bring this up now because who knows what hour we'll get to future issues. With indoor basketball and indoor soccer ending and starting respectively. I think it's time to put it in the pipeline to start having some serious discussions about what we want to do with the rec center. It's really tight over there. There's, you have to have games all day long because you can only have, you know, one game or two games during basketball all the time. So it's not something that's urgent, and I know we've had, we've seen the big plan, and that's a big, you know, pie in the sky plan. But maybe start having some discussions here over next year or so about what a cost-effective way would, would be. To address some of those concerns over there. So that's all I wanted to say, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Welch.
No report.
Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the CCUA on 22nd, and there was some good news about the influence is getting better. And thanks to our pre-treatment programs, we believe. And then I'll let you talk more about the expansion, the wastewater treatment plant that was voted on to expand, assuming we can get the financing right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few quick items. First, I just wanted to remind everybody that the monthly Bel Air Chamber meeting is tomorrow. It'll be here in the community room at 11:30. Chief Atterberry is actually our guest speaker, so if you want to hear more from Chief, feel free to stop in. You're more than welcome. Also, this week on Friday, I'll be attending the K254 Corridor Association meeting, which is on Friday at the Benton Community Center. So we'll be talking a little bit about the Strategic Committee that we've formed for strategic planning for that corridor association. Which is something that Bel Air has really helped with over the years and excited to continue to stay engaged with that. And then I was also made aware that tomorrow at the State Capitol is officially Transportation Day. So a lot of folks that advocate for investment and funding for transportation will be in Topeka doing their thing. And just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to Secretary Reed, KDOT, all the legislators that work hard up there to make sure that we are supporting our infrastructure spending. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So earlier, we read a proclamation that March is Red Cross Month. I understand there is an opportunity to give blood at Sunrise Christian Academy on March 21st. There's also another opportunity at Northeast Magnet High School on April 4th. So there continues to be a critical shortage of blood, so if you're able, please sign up for one of these opportunities to donate blood. We also read a proclamation concerning severe weather week. There's a severe weather safety program on Thursday, March 21st at 6:30 PM here at Bel Air City Hall. On February 22nd, I attended the meeting in Benton Elementary School. This is a brand-new school building and, of course, a very nice facility. Circle Superintendent Don Potter and his team presented what they are doing to create work-ready graduates for their schools. Students have, to create a career track project, part of that project is doing some sort of internship. There is a multi-year program where students start working on this in their first year, usually eighth grade. And with career awareness and complete it in their senior year with some career experience. It looks to be a good program to give these students some exposure to the workforce. When 70% of the population does not have college degrees, we have, this career exposure gives them some experience in workforce. Which helps them succeed in whatever career paths they desire to pursue. Of course, the program is also, has a route for those that are college-bound as well. So if you know of any businesses or organizations that can use these interns, please contact Circle Schools, as I'm sure they'll appreciate knowing about some, some opportunities for interns. On February 22nd, I also, we also met with WAMPO staff on their project, on our project, priorities for Bel Air, 10 projects that we submitted for consideration. This is helpful for WAMPO to make better decisions on projects they approve for the MTP. And just a reminder, getting a project to the MTP does not fund anything. But without a project making it to the MTP, they cannot move forward to the TIP, which is where the funding is allocated. So that's important to get our priorities set on that correctly. Lastly, on February 22nd, CCUA held a meeting, as Councilmember David had stated, and as well as Ms. Hamburg. And we did approve moving forward with the design enhancements for the expansion project in anticipation of reaching a fair cost of service agreements between the cities and CCUA. Per the KDH administrative order, designs for upgrade or expansion have to be in KDH's hands by September 30th, 2024. Wilson and Company is the engineering firm, and said in order to meet that date, they have to have a signed agreement to design those enhancements no later than March 1st. So we met that milestone. And then there is, this coming Saturday, Cedric County Association of Cities will meet in Cedric, Kansas. And the main agenda topic is shared roads. So Cedric County has sent out letters concerning roads that they, that the county owns where the city has annexed to the edge of the road. The county wants the city to annex to the center of the road. Bel Air, and just about every other city in Cedric County has streets with similar situations. So many of these, one city owns the entire road adjacent to the, to another city where the other city only annexed to the edge of the road. And this creates inequities in that the county, city, county that annexed the road has to pay for its maintenance and upgrades. And we have these situations all over Cedric County. So looking forward to ideas how we can fix this for everyone and not just piecemeal this, to fix one at a time. So that will be topic of discussion for Saturday. So at that, I'll ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a brief report regarding our sewer use ordinance. Many municipalities have them. It provides us the legal authority to administer our pre-treatment programs. And Bel Air has a relatively new sewer use ordinance. Burns and McDonald assisted with drafting it, and I'm glad to say, because it is lengthy and detailed, they're assisting our staff with becoming more familiar with it. So we're going over the details. We had our first training session last week. We basically got involved with an introduction, the general provisions, the general requirements, what the procedures are, what our procedures are to protect our wastewater treatment plants. And as for me, I'm just learning so much. I'm learning so much about wastewater, the treatment plants, CCUA, our pre-treatment. But especially what I learned was our need to reduce the disposal of substances into the sewer line. And I'm amazed at what our staff is finding sometimes. It causes incredible performance issues, expensive repairs, it's timely. But I continue to be very impressed with our staff because they were discussing about what they're doing, innovative ways to make it better, fix it, be more timely. So I really appreciate getting to know them and hearing how they're handling that. I look forward to our next training session, which will be probably in a week or two, but that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. I'm glad you see we're getting that training done because that was one of the concerns I had about passing that ordinance, that we get the word out. So that's great. And also, just a reminder to citizens, if you buy these so-called flushable wipes, there's no such thing. They're just, they're mis marketed, they're labeled as flushable wipes, they go in sewer systems, they clog them up. We've actually spent $60,000 per pump to buy grinder pumps to help alleviate some of the problems that those, those so-called flushable wipes create in our sewer system. So if you buy them, please discontinue using them in the sewer. You can put them in the trash, that works, but the other is not, does not work. So I'll move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The spring is a busy time of year, as we all know, and there's a lot of things happening around town that I wanted to let citizens know of. This week, as the mayor read, is severe weather preparedness week. And the Bel Air Police Department and Cedric County Emergency Management partner to put on severe weather training class here at City Hall. And that is on March 21st at 6:30 PM. So if anybody's interested in learning about severe weather, they can come here to City Hall and Emergency Management, and PD will, will help with that training. Then on March 23rd is the Spring Festival from nine to noon at the rec center, always a lot of fun. They've got some new things that they're having this year and some things that they're not doing. So it'll be a fun time with some new activities for the kids. Then on April 27th is shredding recycling, and that's here at City Hall, starts at 9:00 AM. So you can bring any old electronics or any paper that you want shredded, and all of that is free, except I think CRT TVs you have to pay for, but everything else is free. Then the citywide garage sales are May 2nd through the 4th. And then on May 18th is the curb side cleanup. So we do that so that if things don't sell at the garage sale, then you got a couple of weeks and you can get rid of them that way. So anyway, that's all the things that are happening, Mayor.
Very good. Just a reminder also on electronic recycling, a lot of the components and electronics are hazardous waste. If you throw them in the landfill, they'll, they'll be polluting the groundwater. So always better to recycle those and free opportunity to do that, with the exception of, I think, TV screens. And I think if you want your hard drives crushed, they charge you for that as well. But those two things are not free, but everything else is. So very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I am not sure. I think it's Thursday we're going to run the tornado sirens for the emergency preparedness week. So if anybody's not aware of that already, supposed to be at 11 o'clock.
I was not aware of that.
And since it is going to be cloudy weather, we should.
Yeah, beware.
Pay, pay close attention to whether or not there's really a tornado.
Yeah. Yeah, I hate to do a test and find out. It's the real thing, right?
Yes. They'll cancel the test if the weather's bad enough.
Yeah. All right. Was not aware of that. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to item 12A. So this is an agreement with Ms. Katherine Jacobs on, so in order to complete the reconstruction of 53rd Street from Oliver to Woodlawn. Additional right-of-way was needed from Katherine Jacobs. So items A through C address this issue, and our city manager can explain each action item. So, Mr. Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is part of the 53rd Street reconstruction. And there was some needed right-of-way for, mainly at the intersection of Woodlawn and 53rd Street. So staff worked with the property owner, which is Ms. Katherine Jacobs. And were able to actually acquire a 30-foot right-of-way, the entire length of her property, which is a quarter of a mile. And then as part of the construction, we needed some temporary access as well for some berms that were, that were going to be constructed. So item A is basically an agreement between the city and Ms. Jacobs, which really outlines what we are going to do, the city's going to do, and what she's expected to do. And then item B is accepting the permanent easement, the 30-foot right-of-way easement all along her property. That's the, the city accepting that. And then item C is the temporary construction easement, which will be for the length of the project, and then that will get released. So happy to answer any questions.
Are we buying fence, or is that up to the property owner to replace any fence?
No, we're just paying a price, and it's up to her to replace that.
I couldn't tell that for sure because one of the documents showed a new fence, and I didn't know if that was our responsibility or hers.
That's part of the cost that we're paying her to replace it. And I do believe we're removing it. No, we're not removing it. Okay. So that would be up to her to remove it and replace it.
Okay. Wanted to be clear on that.
Yes.
That it wasn't an additional cost.
Yes.
Just to, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, the agreement I read says Bel Air will remove the fence running along the south boundary of the subject parcel. So I do believe that a part of the agreement is, we're probably removing it with the construction project, I assume.
Yep. Please come, microphone.
There's the guy that knows the real answer.
Ken Lee with Garver, design engineer on the project. There is a portion of the fence where the berm is at that might need to be removed with the project. The rest of it isn't necessary to be removed. So if there would be any intent, it would be to remove is only, only as necessary for construction, is the way I would recommend that agreement be stated. So I wouldn't recommend, and there were, the discussions I had with her didn't include removing the entire fence, but, and would have to speak to that. But there's only, only right where the berm is, where that 30, the 30-foot temporary construction easement, or 20-foot temporary construction easement. Is the only area where any removal would really be relevant for the project is just at that east end, so.
Well, I would suggest that if, if, just working with her, if she would like us to do it, I don't see why we would do it.
At the end of the day, it's, if, if it became an issue for the contractor to need to review it, it would be a minor issue to do that, so.
So, okay. Very good. Thank you. If there's any other questions, or if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is our city attorney? Is our city attorney in agreement with that statement from Ken Lee that we are not responsible for removing the fence?
I apologize. It is worded in the agreement that Bel Air will remove the fence. Again, I don't, I wasn't part of that conversation, but I do trust Ken and Garver to to make that decision when it comes time for construction.
Okay, I don't think that would be a huge cost, but.
Yeah, I'll just follow again, if if the agreement is to remove the fence, it's not going to hurt anything to do that. It's 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 a minor thing to deal with. And the most the worst case scenario would be to just talk to a contractor, make sure they they're aware that it has to be removed for the whole length, but it's not going to be a significant cost for the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll just make a comment, knowing that we would only be potentially removing the fence, and nowhere in this agreement does it say we will be replacing the fence. I'd be comfortable moving forward with it. Just wanted to make that statement. I just wanted to make sure nobody else wanted to comment, but I'll go ahead and motion to approve the agreement with Katherine Jacobs for the 53rd Street Reconstruction Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Most from Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussions on item A? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to item B, this acquire a permanent right of right of way for that road on 53rd Street. And this has to be done piecemeal pieces for, I think, legal purposes, but anyway. If there's any no questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion for this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the acquisition of a permanent road right of way from Katherine Jacobs for the 53rd Street Reconstruction Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. And we'll move on to item C, which is considering a permanent right of way. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a temporary construction easement for the 53rd Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or Mr. David.
I'll motion to approve the acquisition of a temporary construction easement from Katherine Jacobs for the 53rd Street Reconstruction Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero. So item D is a resolution amending Resolution 2040. So as we consider reconstruction of 53rd Street between Oliver and Woodlawn, the costs will need to be financed. So this resolution authorized the finance to pay for said improvements. This will be a temp note, even though the resolution says bonds. And Mr. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell is here to explain this issue. Mr. Cowan.
Yes, good evening. So this is typical of the city's process frequently in in financing a project. The real import of this tonight is that you will have authorized bonds in advance of accepting perhaps a construction bid on the project. And when you authorize bonds, that's an exception to the cash basis law. So once that occurs, you can enter into those financial obligations, accept bids, sign contracts without any cash basis law concerns. So that's item one. As was mentioned, this does authorize bonds, and the intent will be to temporarily finance with notes, and it's just the way our statutes are written. You have certain authority to authorize bonds, issue bonds. There's a separate statute that says if you've authorized the issuance of bonds, you can instead issue temporary notes as temporary financing for the project. So if if you do this, when we get to the point of issuing notes, we'll rely on a different statute that says because you've authorized bonds, you can rely on the statute to to issue temporary notes to temporarily finance. I did want to want to add, you'll note that this is an amending and supplementing resolution, and I had forgotten but then recalled that in 2021, we had authorized this project, part of this project, I think some of the design and engineering on 45th Street and maybe something on Woodlawn, and just never acted on that authority. Late in the year, there was a Woodlawn completion financing that was done. And so thought it made sense to just amend that since we moved on from some of those projects and we're just focusing on this. The other thing it does is for federal tax purposes, there are some reimbursement regulations that relate to when you first authorize a project. And so if we amend and supplement, we get to rely on the date in 2021. So if you've looked through this, we just amend, alter what the project description is to include the current project. And then we also change the estimated cost, the authorized bond amount a little bit compared to 2021.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions for Mr. Cowan?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
This is more of just an observation and just a comment for the public and maybe a question for Ty. So this has been brought up a couple of times. In fact, tonight in the meeting, Mayor, you pointed out shared roads, the idea of shared roads. And one thing I want the public to be perfectly clear on is part of this road is shared with Keachai. And so and this has been brought up in the past. Have we talked with Keachai? Are they going to share in the cost? And generally, the answer has been we have talked with them, and I think we should continue to talk with them. Now, what level of commitment that is, who knows? But I think it's still worth pursuing. It's probably not going to pay for half, right? We can't, we can't expect that. But I do want the public to understand the city of Bel Air is moving forward at this project because that road needs to be replaced, or at least we intend to move forward with it. And that is why we've went down the path of hiring an engineer to design the project. And I just wanted that to be out there and make sure that we, I know Ty has brought it up before and Ted as well, that our staff will continue to communicate and work the way the best we can to partner with others that share the road. And this is an important project to us. I just wanted that to be stated for the public. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to adopt a resolution amending and supplementing Resolution Number 21-40 of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, which authorized certain improvements to the 53rd Street in the city and the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay costs of such improvements and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero. On to item E, this is the bid for 53rd Street Reconstruction. So this item was tabled at our last meeting to acquire the needed right of way for the reconstruction of 53rd Oliver and Woodlawn. And I appreciate and thank the staff for getting that done because it so happened. It happened like in two days after the last meeting, but unfortunately, the cycle of meetings presented prevented it from being presented until today. So so previous actions tonight took care of the right of way, and it's now time to consider the bids. Each contractor stated they would honor the prices and timelines if a bid was accepted tonight. And so our city engineer is here to explain the bids and alternates and timelines. So at our last meeting, I said, I will, I personally favor the asphalt option. This road will most likely have a 40 mile an hour speed limit and the smooth and standard. We don't have smooth and standards for these roads, and and I think it's cost prohibitive if we did that. So we see these these steel, these cement roads all over the metro area, and they are always rough riding, and at the higher speeds, they just get rougher. So I believe we would be wiser also to not do the overlay at 53rd from Woodlawn to Rock at this time. We need to see what KDOT is going to do with K254. If they go with a divergent diamond interchange, there will be no frontage road. Instead, they will be looking for commuter access roads one half to one mile away from the interchange, both north and south. And that looks to be like 53rd Street. So we'll need to rebuild that additional traffic for the additional traffic. Right now, we just don't know where, which way KDOT will go in that decision. So additionally, we should reserve these funds for other more pressing projects. So Ms. Steph Stevens, do you have some additional information for us?
I do not have any additional information for you, other than what was discussed at the meeting last night, and you had already mentioned that we did reach out to all the contractors. They would hold their to their completion dates, and they would hold their prices by delaying the decision for two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question. It was reported in the Breeze, which I read today, that this road would only last 15 years and have to be torn out. Can you elaborate on that?
I believe that was an opinion. I don't believe that anybody had, I certainly would not have made that statement. We always design roads to last 15 to 20 years. 20 is usually the design life that we utilize. There's no reason, it's not going to be built to any substandard. It's going to be built to the standard that we expect roads to last, so.
It wasn't the quality. I think it was whether or not it was going to have to go to three lanes. And if we went to three lanes, we would have to rebuild it.
That is correct to some extent. It does all depend, the the two lane versus three lane all depends on the growth of the area if we continue. As we build out the subdivisions to the south, we should be fine with the two lane road. If things start getting built to the north, there may be expansion needed. If we get more Integra or other developments are coming to either the east or the west, then there may be consideration. So at this point, there is not many other options. We do need to do something with this road. The current state is not sustainable for the long term. So something does need to be done. There is some room to expand it to the south. That would create a, we would have to go through and do earthwork to build up the road to the south. We do have right of way to the south that we can use. There would need to be some finagling and reconstruction with the sidewalk work because that is, as it is currently constructed, we've tried to keep everything as far with the sidewalk as close to the right of way as possible. There are some instances where that was not possible, so we had to move it closer to the road. So any expansion, there will be a little bit of rework, but we can do it to a three lane section.
Rework is different than taking it out because we didn't plan to expand it at a future date.
Correct.
So we do, we would be able to widen it at a future date without ripping out what we're putting in now.
There would be some ripping out, but certainly not the whole thing. There would be, I would say, probably at least 75% is salvageable, if not more. And then Mr. Lee is here, and he can certainly speak to that as well. He's much more familiar with the design since he designed it.
Mr. Mayor, just, I was just going to ask, can I just ask a quick question about the, what is our rule of thumb been in the past? If it's within 30% for a concrete markup, has that generally been the the rule of the council to go ahead and do concrete?
That is correct. It's kind of within that 25 to 30% time or limit we are within. I don't don't have those notes in front of me, but I believe it was 12 to 15% with this. It's I, it's my understanding is the the will of the council was that the discussion was kind of centered more around the potential expansion needs in the future.
Thanks.
Well, we wanted to make sure that if we put in concrete, we weren't going to have to do major changes.
So when when the project was designed, we were asked to look at the anticipated growth of the road in 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 a 20-year period, and the road will work as a two-lane road in that time period. Now, when this project started, it was before there was discussions about Integra and those type of things. And that's obviously the type of thing that can change scenarios. So it was designed as a two-lane with the situation that we had at the time when we did the the traffic analysis and all that. In terms of expanding it to a three lane, as Anne said, there is room to do that. There is some sidewalk areas, the the biggest concern is probably the list station area. There's not much room in that area where the list station is at. But there there's opportunities to expand if you had to. It would, it's not optimal to do that expansion in that respect. I think if you're expanding to three lanes, I think you're starting to get into the discussion of should you be doing a full urban arterial curb and gutter replacement at that point and doing the road properly rather than trying to just add a lane on the outside? I think if you get to the point where you need to widen the road, I think you it's going to be prudent to make those considerations. And the the way curb and the way asphalt mat roads or the way mat roads are designed versus curb and gutter roads, you you can't really just repair and do it in place because the grades don't work out with the property lines. They're not designed that way. They're not designed to work that way. So to the long story short is, I I think you're looking at the this being of, the road's not going to be worn out in 15 years. Asphalt roads, I live on a road that's been in my neighborhood now for over 20 years. It's in great shape as long as you just take care of it every once in a while, it'll it'll hold up good. There's some thermal expansion cracking in the street, but the road's in great shape. So a well-maintained asphalt road can last a long time. So I'm not sure what the concern was there, but any any road that you design, especially in an area where we got potential growth, we don't know what's going to happen with Integra or not. There's no guarantee that a road will be there for 20, 40 years. I've designed many roads in Wichita that I did McLean Boulevard right next to the baseball stadium. Part of it got torn out for the baseball stadium. I did the streets at the waterfront. There there was a bunch of businesses by the where the or not the waterfront, the there by the Hyatt Hotel. I designed redesigned those roads, and five out, five years after those roads were built, they ripped them all out and put in the Hyatt and all those improvements. So so I I think you don't want to get too caught up in trying to outguess the future. I think you want to make the best decision that you can at the time right now. Going to a three-lane section right now didn't need to happen with our analysis that we had done, as she said, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, but based on the typical design life of an asphalt pavement, this will work fine. So does that help answer that question?
A little bit. Yeah, another question, I know we touched on this last time, but the mayor keeps talking about the smoothness, and I think you said that it would be relatively smooth if we did go with concrete.
So smooth is relative. Would to his point, when you're designing higher speed roadways like highways and stuff, they actually have a piece of equipment, and the name is eluding me right now, but it's a rolling piece of equipment that measures and it marks on the ground where there's rough spots, and then they grind it. We we don't have that budgeted into the process here, and it's certainly nothing that you would normally do on this kind of a roadway. So it'll be rough, it'll be, there'll be more undulations and a little bit more movement with concrete than there is with asphalt. It's just a natural thing. Is it to the point where it's a problem? Well, we have a couple miles of concrete roads and everybody gets by. But it's it's one of those things that to his point, it it will be smoother with asphalt. But yeah, as far as getting it to the highway smoothest standards, there's extra work involved with that. The one thing I do want to just follow up on as far as the timeframe, the the biggest concern as far as the concrete versus the asphalt, Kansas Paving, when I met with them before we put this out to bid, and they went ahead and put an October 1st concrete completion date, and then the final date of November 15th. If we had any kind of delays, concrete is more likely to become problematic in terms of taking longer than the asphalt. The asphalt's got more cushion in it than the concrete does. And that was one of the things that they had expressed to Anne and I when we had met with them about it, is just the way they start staged the concrete out, it just takes longer to do it. And that's why Pearson in particular, you can see they had a over a month-long delay compared, one compared to the other. So that's the other thing to consider is just with all the variables in place, asphalt's more likely to be done this year. They, all of them are saying they can get it done this year, but you know, we've heard that before.
Yeah, but Kansas Paving says they can do asphalt and concrete in the same timeframes.
Yeah. They had a a little bit longer delay on their concrete, the final completion date for the concrete work as far as their final, final date. But as far as the pavement down, they're saying the same date, so.
It would be drivable October 1st?
That's that's the, that's the plan right now, assuming no delays, so.
So three out of the bids will be available October 1st, the other in August 15.
Yeah. Yeah, as far as the asphalt, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I think I made my comments last time, so I'll probably not repeat those. But the one thing I will repeat is, I'm just looking at the $200,000. To me, this is a two lane. We would have probably, if we would have looked at this in 15 years, we probably would have wanted it to be an urban section. We probably would have wanted it to be three lane. The data probably would prove that. Storms were would have went in, but we can't afford to do that for this road. And that decision was made a long time ago and we directed Garver to do a two lane section. I'm just looking at $200,000 and I know that if we go after grant money, that turns into a million dollars pretty quick if we can get a grant. And so for those reasons, and for the ones I said before, I think the asphalt is, is perfectly adequate for this. And like Ken has said, if we maintain it, it could last longer than 15, 20 years if we properly maintained it. Like I, I believe we have a good plan in place for some of those things. So for that reason, I'm actually going to motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving for the base bid in the amount of $1,454,1211. And for, for the, for the total bid, that's the total base bid for the 53rd Street reconstruction Oliver Woodlawn. And authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second. I have motion for Mr. Dean and a second for Mr. David. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate all of the discussion because I came in here ready to go with that ad alternate one. But hearing the further discussion and the difference between the highway concrete and what would actually be done on that stretch road. I'm in favor of this as well, so thanks.
Well, if we're going to talk, I'm in favor of the concrete because I think we will have zero maintenance for at least the 15 year lifespan and the asphalt, we know we will have maintenance. You know, we also know there are some soft spots along there that the asphalt may give to. It, it may get fixed good enough, it may not, but the concrete would span that and we would not have the dips that we will probably get in the asphalt. Plus, we keep asking our residents to pay for at concrete on their streets and here we're thinking about going the cheaper route.
It's tough. We're betting against the future when we are the other. Yeah.
I've got to get her crystal balls.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we need those. So any additional discussions or questions? If there are none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye. Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
That was Kansas paving.
That's Kansas paving, yes. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item F. So this is a proposal of construction inspection administration for 53rd Street. So as with most major projects, the city engages a local engineering firm to handle inspections of the road construction. Engineering firms were contacted to submit a proposal for 53rd Street reconstruction observation between Oliver and Woodlawn. And so Ann Stevens is here to explain the work and bids and the answer, answer any questions. Ms. Stevens.
So I reached out to four firms, well, actually five firms to put in quotes for proposals for construction inspection services on this road. Since it is more of a major road, I asked for full time inspection, similar to what KDOT requires on their projects. But without all the extra KDOT documentation and paperwork, we will get appropriate documentation for the work, but not the, all the extra stuff that they require per their grant requirements. So the three firms that responded, PEC, Trans Systems and WSP. We have worked with PEC inspection department on the patchwork that we did last year, as well as the scrub seal last year. We're going to be working with their inspection department again on the slurry seal that's, or I'm sorry, the micro surfacing that is coming this year. And Trans Systems, we have, we worked with a very long time ago when we did the Sunflower Commerce Park, the original design on, the original construction on that. WSP is a newer firm in the area. We have not worked with them before. They actually came very highly recommended by one of the firms that chose not to bid on this project. And so I went ahead and asked them to submit a quote. They very well respected in the area. They've done quite a few works, quite a bit of work. They're actually the lead on the K96 project. KDOT uses them quite frequently as well. So I'm comfortable with all the firms. I did reach out to two firms for compliance testing. I got one response, which was PEC. And then after discussing with Trans Systems, I said, hey, we can actually do some of that testing for you while our guys are on site. And so I reached out to WSP as well, asking for inspection bids. So you have a revised agenda in front of you, which is different than what is shown on the screen. That does include that compliance testing. Trans Systems or PEC's fee was $27,531. Trans Systems says that the majority of that, those construction testing costs will be included. The inspector that they have, that they plan to have out onsite is capable, he is certified to do the testing. They would just need a little bit of pre-testing done. And I have not forwarded them our geotechnical report. It may be that the information they need may already be in there, but we're not 100% sure. There may be a little bit of an additional fee to get what we call a moisture density curve. That's a curve that shows the relationship between the percentage of moisture that's in the soil and the, the density of the soil to get a compaction percentage. It's that compaction percentage that kind of rules if they did an appropriate job with the subgrade or not. It needs to be 95%, but if it's too wet, then if it's either too wet or too dry, you're not going to get that 95% or above compaction. So there's a little bit of additional testing that would be need to, need to be done with Trans Systems. WSP and PEC would both have separate testers coming out. And those prices would be, that is what they estimate needed to be done on the project. The actual bill would be related to the number of tests that were actually performed. Trans Systems, it didn't matter. They're out there anyway. So that's what we have. Trans Systems fee did have a range. I originally had this scheduled, so we would accept the bids for 53rd Street last, at the last meeting. And then the consultants would know and could price their proposal accordingly. Since we didn't, we delayed it, they couldn't do that. And they said, you know, it's really dependent on the amount of work that needs to be done. So if you accepted both alternates, there's more work that needs to be done, therefore there is more time. I fully expect that both PEC and WSP, those fees will be reduced based on the amount of work that the city approved tonight. So that's kind of where we're at. It's, I really try to get as much apples to apples as I can for the council, but sometimes it's just not available.
Would we be wiser to table this and give you an opportunity to go back to these three contractors and see if they can give us a more precise price now that they know what we're, what we've approved?
I would respectfully request not because we want to get this project going as soon as possible. And that will, their original start date was planned for the 17th. We're not, we could, it's just not going to give them much time to get that together.
So maybe we'd be wiser to just approve them with a price not to exceed, but with the anticipation that you're going to, you're going to do some magic and get some money out of this.
Yes, yeah. And it's, it's, in whichever firm you choose, the price that you see on there is, for example, PEC at 268 996 40. That is an estimate of the hours that they're planning on putting in, the tests that they're running, et cetera. The final bill should be lower than that unless you get a change order in front of you for an unanticipated circumstance, which required them to spend more time. So these are kind of maximums. You do have the prices, but this really needs to be focused more towards the firm that we think can provide the best service for the city. And so it's not entirely price dependent.
One more clarification and I'll call Mr. Dean. So you, the, just to understand the PEC quote, you said the quote is 241 465 plus the $27,531 for the additional testing.
That is correct.
Okay, that's, thank you. Mr. Dean.
I, so I had two quick clarifications. The WSP quote had inspection and then a compliance, but the total is the same as the inspection. So was it included or is it an addition?
No, that would be an addition. I apologize.
No, it's fine. I assumed that was the case. And then secondly, would you expect the costs to be less for the asphalt option for these testing firms or more than the concrete? Do you have a feel for that?
I would anticipate that it's going to be less because with any time that they're, that they're out on the project. The concrete takes 20 days to cure-ish, 20 to 30. They still, the inspector still needs to be out on the project, counting the number of vehicles, counting the number of personnel that are out on the project. They still have to make sure that the traffic control is up and onsite and working and that any erosion control devices are in place. So they still have work that's being accomplished, even if the contractor's not really doing much. And so with the less time they're going to, of the contractor, they're going to spend less time on the project.
That makes sense. I just wanted a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Amber.
With time being of the essence and that March 18th date looming, I was talking to our city attorney about this beforehand. Is there any way to, because we don't have exact numbers and if I'm understanding your report correctly, we feel confident that any of them will do a good job?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a way to just let the decision, make a motion if the council, if that was the will of the council to let you try to figure out what the final estimates are and approve the bid based on price once you get that information?
I can certainly reach out after tonight if that is the will of the council and say, okay, we approved Kansas paving for the basement only. What would be your revised estimate based on this information? I can certainly do that if that's the will of the council. I just would prefer not to leave the final approval decision for another meeting.
So are you, just to clarify, your, your suggestion, your suggestion that we approve a contractor tonight with and do an additional negotiation that we would assign an agreement at a later date, like in a couple of days or next week timeframe?
I would suggest letting the contractor decision, the inspector decision be price dependent.
That's what I thought I heard.
Okay.
That's what I thought I heard too, and I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is not a hard number. This number is a estimate. It's not a lump sum. We're going to be billed based on their actual performance. So I don't know that I feel comfortable making the decision solely on that because it's not going to be just price. At least that's the way I'm seeing it.
Because I'm, I'm sure every firm is going to be putting in a similar effort to ensure that the project gets built in accordance with the plans and the specifications and to their best ability. The effort on the part of the different contractors may vary slightly, but they're all putting in kind of their, their best estimate of what it's going to cost.
Is there, on the hourly rates that they're charging or that they're quoting, is there a significant difference in any of them? I'd be surprised if there was, but you just got to ask the question.
I, I don't believe so. I do have to admit, I didn't review it that closely because I was not, I, I was not anticipating that question.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor. How do you feel about Trans Systems doing the compliance testing and having it baked in? And do you like the idea of having another party do that or, or, well, I guess it's the same party. Do you have any preference here on contractors? I mean, I know you said they, they all would do a good job, but, and I know PEC is doing a lot of other work for us.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I was actually quite tickled when they had mentioned that they would, their, their fee for the inspection would include any compliance testing. Because it's, it's hard to anticipate, as Mr. Welch, Mr. Welch said earlier, we, we know there are some soft spots. The, the quote was all based on the same amount of testing. But if there's soft spots and we need to do more testing, then Trans Systems will be right there. They'll do the, any additional testing that they think is needed. They can run 10 tests instead of two tests if that's what was originally planned. And so I really liked that. I thought it was great to have, most of these firms have construction certified observers. Why they chose to go different route, you know, that's, that's their prerogative, but I was really excited when I heard that.
So the testing that you're talking about is really onsite, like compaction testing, those kind of things?
That is correct.
Okay, so the, doing like the geotechnical analysis where you have to bore holes and stuff like that, that will be, that's already done.
That's, that's been done, yes. The, the only additional piece that we may need to do is to take soil samples when they start tearing up the, the road again. Take soil samples, send it to a lab to get the analysis done. So they have, it's called a proctor, a curve that they can evaluate whether this, the compaction effort passed or did not pass. So it's, it's like providing Trans Systems with an answer key.
Got you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Is there any way we could approve the, the low side of Trans Systems and do any extra testing on a change order? Would they, would they take that $215,000?
I'm sure they would. That, that is something that we can do. We've had a lot of discussions regarding change out, change orders on a certain project in the past. So I would just want an affirmation from the council that if additional work is needed, that you would support that because I don't want to be out there myself. I'm not qualified. And I want to make sure that we have a good product.
Mr. Mayor. Quick clarification. So looking at the proposals, do you feel comfortable that each firm, I, I know we're comfortable with each firm, but do you feel like each firm has dedicated a senior level or pretty equivalent level inspector to the job? Or do you think that there is a glaring difference in the personnel and their, the staff that they're going to dedicate?
No, they were, they had all dedicated senior level personnel. I had talked to each firm and I said, the thing that I want the most is I want the experience. I know council's going to be concerned on price. I want the experience. You see the other road that we have out here. We need that experience. We need the eyes on the ground. We need the expertise to help us navigate any issues that could potentially arise. We've done our best to design around those, but you never know once you start opening things up.
That makes me feel better. I, I like that answer. I wanted to know that there was going to be some experience on the job, so that's important.
That, that was my utmost importance.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the same lines as Councilman David, just thinking through the, do we start with a base lower? And then we can talk through whoever we hire, like what additional things may be recommended that we do. And so for that, I'm going to move forward with motioning to accept Trans Systems and for the agreement for construction inspection and administrative services with, sorry, I already said Trans Systems, so I kind of reworded that a little bit, for construction inspection administration for 53rd Street from Oliver Woodlawn and amount of, or not to exceed $215,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second. Most for Mr. Dean and a second for Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussions?
I've still got the two questions I wanted to ask a minute ago.
Okay, you still have opportunity to ask?
It sounded like you didn't think PEC was going to be as readily available for the compliance testing, is that?
No, they, they are. There, it's just, if you need, if you see a soft spot, Trans Systems has an employee onsite that will take that test immediately. PEC has always been very responsive to coming out. I know geotechnical services are busy, so if you try and schedule things out, I know they would make themselves available as, as much as they can to help us out. My only point was, Trans Systems is onsite. Their employee, their inspector is capable of testing and so they had included it in their services.
So the onsite inspector will be capable of doing that testing. We know that for a fact.
Yes.
Okay, the other thing is, I read Trans Systems bid and they said it was dependent on who the construction contractor was. Does that not bother you?
Not really. With different contractors, you have different relationships. It's all in relationship and trust. I don't feel that they're going to provide us with any less of a service.
Well, the question then becomes which contractor are they willing to give us the cheapest price on? Have we picked the high price contractor?
They, that's not something that they're, that they have told me, so.
Well, that bothers me because there's $70,000 difference in their bid. And that's the factor they say is making the difference is who the construction contractor is.
And I think part of that is, is when we looked at the dates that they had available, Pearson said that they were, if we chose concrete, they said that they would be out there until the end of November. Whereas APAC said that if they chose concrete, they'd have it done at the early September. So it's really time based. It's. It's, I've asked for full-time inspection, which means you're onsite every, anytime the contractor is there. The contractor is really not, it's not as dependent on the trust of the contractor. It's really time-based because it's the hours that they put into the project.
Okay, I would have, I would have liked to have seen these bids then made the same as the construction bids were with the, with the times and the materials, so that we could compare apples to apples. And I understand you wanted to do this a week later or whatever, and, and I appreciate that, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ms. Hamburg.
I hear John's point because that, that was my concern and why I was trying to have a backup plan. But I think it's pretty safe to say because we went with the add alternate one or with, without anything, with the base bid, no concrete. It's pretty safe to say that they are going to be on the low end.
There, they are. It will likely be a little bit higher because APAC said that they could get done. If we had chose, I mean, even with the asphalt alternate that you chose, they said, said they could get done by August fifteenth. And Kansas paving is into October. So there is some difference there. I don't think it's necessarily the contractor, but I think it's more of the timeframe.
So with time being of the essence, and we've got three oh four with WSP little over and basically two sixty-nine with PEC. So you don't have to turn around and get additional approval? Should we slightly increase the trans system not to exceed, to build in some padding?
It, it's up to the council. What I can do is if you can, if you approve Trans Systems tonight for the two fifteen, I will go back to them tomorrow and reach out to them. And then at your next meeting, if they feel there's anything different, we can bring it back to you.
As a change order?
As a change order, or we can go and we can run with this number until they're eighty percent done, seventy-five percent done, so they still have room to work, but we can come back with any additional fees.
Makes sense. That's why I went with the low number. We can figure that out in four months and decide if we need to increase it or not.
Okay, Mr. Welch.
Before we vote, would you please reread the motion?
Motion I have is to, and I won't read it verbatim, but I'll just tell you the way I understand it, is to accept transition, Trans Systems with a price not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for construction inspection and administration for fifty-third from Oliver to Woodlawn.
Okay, I wanted to make sure it said not to exceed in it or, or not, whichever way it was worded.
Let's find out. It's not to exceed, okay?
And it looks like Councilmember Dean agrees that that's what he said.
Good.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries three to one. Very good. Move on to item G, which is a bid for Hillcrest water main replacement. So Hillcrest water main is currently cer, currently a four-inch cast iron pipe from Forty-seventh Street to, to the dead end of Hillcrest and needs to be upgraded to an eight-inch PVC pipe to accommodate pressure and flow throughout the neighborhood. The proposal is to replace the transit pipe with an eight-inch PVC pipe and replace the four-inch cast iron pipe with an eight-inch PVC. This will allow us to upgrade our current flow and have more reliable system. Staff solicited bids from five companies with four responding. Our public works director is here to explain the project and answer questions. Mr. Murray McGee. So one question I have is, how do you get more pressure out of a pipe that's twice the size?
We're gonna get more flowed out through there.
Definitely that.
The, the service line is gonna be from three-quarter. We're gonna move them up to one inch too, like we've been doing on the other services throughout town. So that's gonna help everybody in that, that location too. As you guys know, every year we try to upgrade pipe systems, everything. This wasn't first on the list, but this is what needs to be done now because from that six-inch main going east to the eight-inch main on Woodlawn there, that is an AC pipe which keeps breaking. So we had four breaks in the last year. We have a break right now currently. And that's a loop system and it's actually shut off right now. So we're having to go down there every couple of weeks, open the fire hydrant, drain it out so that the stagnant water doesn't get stagnant, so.
You put in a bigger main, is that gonna increase the pressure like on that four-inch main and make it more susceptible to breakage?
No, because over here on Woodlawn and then back to here, we have twelve-inch and that whole loop system will be an eight-inch, so.
Okay, so it'll all be AEPSI or whatever.
It'll be more pressurized and, and more steady is what it will be.
Okay, this will be better flow. It won't be higher pressure.
Right.
Okay.
And then, of course, we got fire hydrants and valves. Everything that's existing now is what we're putting back in the same locations, so.
And you have no problem with any of these contractors?
No, this is, no, I have no problem with any of these.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from UMC in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for the Hillcrest water main replacement and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Most by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Move on to item H. So staff has identified a number of street repairs that need contracted out. Web Road has a subgrade failure and needs repaired for safety concerns. And the road repair is roughly about sixty feet by twelve feet. Also in this bid is a, will be a patch repair on Thirty-Ninth and Edgemore from a previous water main break. And that patch repair is approximately forty-five square yards. The third repair will be on Oliver between Forty-seventh and Forty-eighth Street. And this patch is consists of an eight-foot by twenty-foot subgrade and asphalt repair. I understand this one is intended to be completed before the micro-surfacing of Oliver is completed. So staff has solicited bids from three companies and our public works director is here to speak at this one as well.
So as you know, it's, this has to be done. There's safety concerns on some of these and it's just something we have to do. So I think the report kinda shows everything, all the patch repairs, what size it is, what needs to be done and I don't know what else I can say about it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Quick question, Marty. The one that's on Oliver Street, the one that's Forty-seventh, Forty- is it settling? Like, wha, what's happening there? Do you, can you tell?
And if you look inside the pipe, I figured maybe it was, the pipe was separating and it was causing a problem. It's, it's not the pipe. It's actually just settling around the pipe. So that's gonna be cut out, the westbound lane, right between Forty-seventh, Forty-Eighth, whatever that was. And so we'll take that whole section out, compact it, bring it back up to subgrade and then asphalt it back and then we'll be ready for the micro-surfacing after that.
Gotcha. So that one's gonna be more intense than your average patch because you're doing a lot more subgrade?
Yeah.
Prob, probably. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I had a question on that one too with the, with Vance Brothers coming back and what they did back in the fall. Will they just go over that patch when they come back?
That's what he'll have to do. And there's a couple of places in town that he's gonna have to hit anyway. So that is, didn't last or didn't get hit the first time or so, there's more than just that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what he'll do.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to accept the bid from UMC for a total of?
UMC. Word H.
Wait, I'm sorry.
You wanna look at the next one? That was the previous one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We're just moving so fast. I'm not used to it. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for street repairs on Web Road, north of Fifty-third, Oliver, between Forty-seventh and Forty-eight Street and Thirty-Ninth and Edgemore and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That Mary, that motion carries four to zero. Move on to item I. So this item was tabled at the last city council meeting due to lack of time. So the city received a grant in twenty-twenty-three to fund assistance in removing the culvert bridge underneath Oliver just south of Forty-Fifth Street. KDOT considers a series of culvert pipes a bridge anytime the opening is greater than twenty feet. This series of culverts was intended to be replaced with the Forty-Fifth Street Oliver to Woodlawn project, but when the funding opportunity came up, the city applied and was eventually grant, awarded the grant. So the city intends to replace the culvert bridge with a box culvert that does not meet bridge criteria. And our city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to explain this agreement process and answer questions.
So this will be much simpler than the agreement that we have with KDOT on the Woodlawn project because it does not include federal funds. It is just state funds. Ken Lee with Garver is currently diligently working on the plans for that bridge replacement. And this is just the agreement that sets forth the terms and conditions. It was my error with, this was awarded at October, maybe last year. I thought, I remember discussing it in a council meeting, but apparently I never got the official approval from the council. So that was my error in bringing it back before you. KDOT's been hounding me. Where is this agreement? Where is this agreement? I asked Melissa, where's this agreement? She says, it was never approved. And I said, okay, well, we'll, we'll fix that. So I appreciate the patience. It's been, Saint Maria has approved, has reviewed it and I'll let her comment if she has any questions.
Do you have any questions concerning this agreement?
I don't have any questions. In fact, this was the agreement where we found a circular type error in it. And KDOT found it as well, so they went ahead, they fixed it and they sent it right back to us. So I appreciate they did that pretty quickly.
So the only concern then is that this is far enough back, it won't affect the reconstruction of that intersection?
That is correct. It'll be all underneath. It's, yeah, there's gonna be no, Ken, Ken was already planning on designing this anyway with the Forty-Fifth and Oliver project. So, yeah, it's not gonna affect that at all. This is just gonna be work that will be done in advance of that.
And I assume he'll also make it wide enough for whatever road we want to put on top of it?
Yes.
I did ask him, I think if he was gonna, maybe I asked you, I don't remember which one, but that we'd at least have, make sure it can handle a five lane, not that we're planning a five lane, but I need to go in a three-lane or two-lane and, you know, in five years, you need a five lane. And you go, oh, now we gotta redo that.
Yes.
That does kinda bring up a question. It's gonna handle five lane plus sidewalks?
Yes, we will, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
Cause there's some places down on Oliver where they put a bridge in and they forgot to make it wide enough for the sidewalks.
Right. And just to clarify, this is just the agreement with KDOT. The design has not been completed yet. There is no construction imminent for this location. This is just basically the funding agreement to accept the funding from KDOT.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Kansas local bridge improvement program, bridge reconstruction rehabilitation agreement by and between the Kansas Department of Transportation and the City of Bel Air and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero. Move on to item J. So this is a proposal from Meyer Specialty Services. So in light of all the issues with the Woodlawn project and the forthcoming remediation work, somebody suggested, I don't know who it was, it's his or your counsel, but there was a suggestion made, an investigation of the box culvert that runs the length of the project from Quail Ridge Pond to Forty-Fifth Street be completed to ensure that the box is in good condition with no cracks or separated joints. Staff reached out to Meyer Specialties and Services for a quote to perform a thorough cleaning and video investigation of the box culvert and storm sewer pipe running underneath the northbound lane of Woodlawn from the box at Quail Ridge to Forty-Fifth Street. So Ms. Stevens is here to explain this one and answer questions.
So typically with sanitary sewer pipes, which are also gravity dependent, before we accept the sanitary sewer pipe, we make the contractor run a little camera down, clean out the pipe as well as camera it to make sure there's no bellies in the pipe, all the joints are tight. With KDOT specifications, they do not require that on storm sewer pipes. We typically don't require it on storm sewer pipes as well, just through our regular subdivision process. But in this instance, since we are having all of the issues, I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that there's, that we're leaving nothing left uncovered is to the maximum extent that we can. This is one more step that I think it is prudent to take to make sure that there's no issues with the box culvert moving forward. If there does happen to be some, then we can make sure that the contractor will re, they will return and they will fix whatever issues that were developed. So I have talked to them about it and they, they're, they think it's a good idea. They're willing to come back and fix anything if it is found. But since this was not part of the KDOT standard procedure, it's not part of their inspection requirements. It was not done upon the completion of the box culvert. We did have our construction inspector, Garver, out there. They were inspecting throughout the construction of the box culvert. They have no reason to believe that there's any issues, but it's just kind of one of those relatively cheap insurance policies to make sure that we're doing what we can. So we have a good road at the end of all this, once we get the Woodlawn reconstructed.
So what kind of a timeframe are they looking at doing this in?
They, I'm not sure if they gave a timeframe, but it's, it's certainly within the next several weeks after the acceptance of the quote. And I'm just pulling through the, it usually takes them, it, it doesn't take them, I mean, it's not gonna be a month. It's gonna be probably within a couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, that's why I would anticipate that we would have a result soon.
Yes.
We don't wanna wait three months for the result of this, right?
These, these are, it's, it's a pretty standard procedure. I mean, they do it all the time for storm, or for sanitary sewer pipes. The storm sewer is not that much different. It's just much larger.
Yeah.
And so there, it's gonna use more water to clean. So it's gonna take a little bit longer, but it's, it's not something that they don't do frequently.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Thanks Ann for that background on it. I certainly appreciate it and I think it's a, a good idea. I know KDOT did a pretty thorough job giving us a lot of sub, a lot of their geotech expertise and help us understand what's going on with the road. I think it makes a lot of sense to do something like this to make sure that whatever we do going forward, we have as much information possible to make that decision on a fix for the road. And it would be a really good idea to find that out, that we're having an issue if we are sooner than later. So I appreciate you following up on that. I think that makes a lot of sense. And so for that, I'm gonna motion to approve the quote from Meyer Specialty Services in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred for a thorough cleaning and video inspection of the storm sewer box culvert and pipe that runs underneath the northbound lane of Woodlawn from Quail Ridge to Forty-Fifth and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussions?
I'm not sure we should be doing this this soon. Since we really don't have any idea what our repair work's gonna be and if they have to remove soil or something, they may break some of that culvert when they do that repair work. And clearly the, I've fairly clearly, the water that's, the issue is not coming from the storm sewer. If it was, I think it'd be working the other direction. It would be sanctioning the water out of the dirt soil and on down to the, through the drainage.
And in response to Mr. Welch's concern about the timing, we can always require them to camera it after whatever rework is done. I think it's just prudent to figure this out first, just in case there's something happening. If you don't know, I would just like to rule it out.
Okay. Well, I, if there's an issue there, you'd wanna know it sooner than later because you need, that may, maybe you have to go through some excavator to move a box or something, right? because you need, that may, maybe you have to go to some excavator to move a box or something, right?
And there's, there's been a lot of geotechnical work done, a lot of, the DCP testing where they're plunking their things down. I mean, it's a five pound, I think it's a five pound hammer. It should not damage the box, but you just, you don't know. I just, what kind, I mean, it's a relatively inexpensive insurance policy and that's kind of why I'm recommending it.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
So we definitely want to do this now and we probably or very likely would want to do this also after the, the work down the road to investigate again? Or is that gonna be just part of the process of rebuilding Woodlawn where they're gonna check that as they go?
They checked it as they went the first time. I would recommend, just because of the issues on this project, that we are probably gonna want to do this again at the end of the reconstruction work, that relatively cheap insurance policy. I mean, we're close to $9 million by the time we're in it with all of the change orders we've got up until this point. You know, $12,000 is kind of a drop in the bucket compared to that. And even if it's 24 and we have to do it twice, I... It lets me see...
But no question right now, because that could affect what we, yeah, okay, gotcha.
And we can work that cost into any change order that comes forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on this motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
I'm not convinced, so I'm gonna vote against.
Okay. So that motion carries three to one. All right, move on to item K. This is an interlocal service agreement. This is kind of really cool news. So in the past years, city operated a free brush site disposal. And since all city land was sold, the city was unable to find a suitable brush site within Bel Air to continue the program. So recent talks with Kechai officials have opened up the possibility of an exchange of services. The second part of this action deals with the consent waiver from Triplett Wolf and Garrison LLC. And our city manager, she can explain the action and answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Lasher.
Yes, so when, it was kind of a double edged sword. When the city sold all the land, that was great, but we lost our brush site. And so we had some, a number of citizens that used our brush site that were disappointed. And so Kechai still maintains a brush site for their citizens. And they have a new city administrator and we have started meeting monthly just to keep track of what's going on and work together in each community, being as we're so close. And I had asked if they would be interested in maybe allowing Bel Air citizens to use their brush site and, and in knowing that there's a value to that, that in return, their Kechai citizens could utilize our rec facility and services for the same fee as our residents pay, is kind of a mutual benefit. And he thought it was a great idea, took it to his governing body and they said they would be certainly open to that. So I worked with our city attorney to come up with a interlocal service agreement that basically spells out the benefits of each city. And so, so both the attorney for Kechai, who actually is Triplett Wolf and Garrison, represent them, and Maria worked that out. And I'll let her kind of explain the waiver, but it's something to do with attorneys and the fact that Triplett Wolf and Garrison also works for us as well. So that's where this waiver came in. So I'll let Maria kind of explain that piece of it.
With Triplett Wolf and Garrison representing, they would not look at this interlocal agreement until they made sure to let everyone know that they do work for Kechai, they do work for Bel Air. Past, present projects, in order to make sure that you are all aware and that you are proceeding informed, they put the letter together. Now, of course, the representations in the past and present are completely unrelated to this brush pile and the Bel Air rec program, but they were doing that for your benefit.
Well, that's very good. And I appreciate your working with us on getting some of that modification done because there was a paragraph in there that I thought was a little bit of a problem and you were able to move that out. So the version that we got into packet today is not the same version you saw Friday. If you haven't pulled the packet since Friday, this is slightly different, but only a little bit. So I think it's a good improvement.
Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, since I never used it, the, the brush site here was free and they just say the, the price, is it currently free for Kechai residents up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we have any idea whether we're gonna see a decrease in fees at the rec center because of this or an increase in usage?
I asked Brian and he said there isn't a huge number of Kechai residents that use the facilities. Now, he, he did say that, you know, it may be a few thousand dollars, couple $3,000 maybe. But as you said, there may be some increased usage. And so there, it may not actually be a decrease in revenue because more people may use the pool or come to join some of the, the rec programs or something like that. So the number may increase. So you may not actually see any revenue. But if there, if there is, let's say no one does utilize it, or if you utilize it, you know, you could see a drop of a couple thousand dollars. But we figured, I think when we closed the brush side, the city was spending over $10,000 maintaining a brush side. So we could theoretically lose up to $10,000 and still break even for that service.
What about the pool usage? If, if there's days, I understand that it's already totally swamped. Are we gonna make it worse? Are we gonna expand ours?
And that's something that, you know, that's something that they'll have to look at. The issue that we ran into with the pool was lifeguards. So you, you have to have one lifeguard for 25, I think it's 25 swimmers. And we would have, you know, four lifeguards on duty, so we could only have 100 swimmers. And if we start noticing that every day we're having 100 or more come, then we'll have to add another lifeguard. So that's the issue is the staffing versus more than just the, the people size.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be turning away a large number of people from the pool.
Sure.
I will make a motion to approve an interlocal service agreement for exchange of services between the City of Bel Air, Kansas and the City of Kechai, Kansas, and approve the conflict waiver from Triplett Wolf Garrison LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Welsh, the second for Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion?
Mayor, I'll also thank staff, Ty and Maria. I think that's great. I think anytime we can partner with other, other locals is awesome. So appreciate you guys' hard work and the idea coming up and the new administrator over at Kechai. I haven't had a chance to meet them, but appreciate them too.
Very good. If there are other comments or questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion passes four to zero. Next items are all executive sessions, so I think I'd like to have at least a five minute recess and then we'll work these. And we're planning each one of them to be 15 minutes. So hopefully we can get out of here in an hour, but we'll see how that works.
I will make a motion for a seven minute recess.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welsh, the second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. It's too bad. We're, we're seven minute recess. Motion passes four to zero.
Maybe we didn't need that.
To order and move on to the next item, agenda, which is 13A. I'll entertain a motion for 15 minutes. David.
Make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Invite the city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, city engineer, and Neil Gosh. The meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:57.
Sorry, I'll second.
Hey, I got a motion for Mr. David and a second for Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Executive session for 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item 13B and that would be for 15 minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which should be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session will include the city manager, assistant city manager, and attorneys for the city. And the executive session will be for a period of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 9:16 PM.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg and a second by Mr. Welsh. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Executive session for 15 minutes. Hold the same sign. Executive session for 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item 13C, and I'd like 15 minutes for this as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or Mr., yeah, Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to recess into executive session to discuss personnel performance pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session will include the city attorney. The executive session will be for a period of 15 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:35 PM.
A second?
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All payers say aye.
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 Hold the same sign. Executive session for 15 minutes. You can just push the button and turn it off. We held an executive session, and I'm going to call the meeting back to order. No binding action was taken. We're ready to move on to item 13D. So we need 15 minutes for this one as well. So somebody want to give us a motion?
I will make a motion to go to recess into executive session to discuss personnel performance pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session will include the assistant city manager. The executive session will be for a period of 15 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers. And, can't do that, 9:43?
9:52.
9:52, okay. Bad math. We'll resume at 9:52.
Motion by Mr. Welsh, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries 4-0, and executive session for 15 minutes. Motion carries four to zero and executive session for 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held the executive session. No binding action was taken. And ready to move on to item 14, discussion and future issues. So next week, we will have our workshop on March 12th at 6:30. Assume everybody can make that. If there's an issue, let us know right now or over the week, next week, so we plan accordingly. But anyway, so on the agenda are streets, water, sewer, sewer and water improvements for 2024. And anything that you meant, what I did add to that, if you do. As a chance.
Ms. Hamburg said something about the rec center expansion.
Well, there was a, I do know there was a, a study done, what, six months ago or so? I don't know where we are on that, but okay, we probably could put it on rec center and see if we got time, okay?
So April, we're going to have a representative from PEC here to talk our strategic comp plan. So that would probably fall in line with a little bit of that.
Better with that?
Yep, yeah, I think April would probably be our time. And then that leads into May and June, which is our budget discussion. So I think, I think maybe one more month and we can start talking about that.
Seeing a 10% increase in valuations.
That's always, yeah.
That wasn't cool. I didn't like that news. All right. Any other issues? If not, item 15 is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean, and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye. Close same sign. It's too bad if you want to say no, but anyway, we are adjourned. That motion carries four to zero.